Oh, Jesus. Nobody writes curse of anymore.
One, one day to go. So the reason you said it stopped.
It is a bad call. This is good. It's like, no free breakfast. The Beverdine on the follow lines on Chestnut Hill.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Board of Selectmen's meeting on November 4th, 2013. And would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder that the second quarter personal property and real estate taxes were due today. The town hall offices will be closed on Monday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans' Day. The board wishes to thank all the veterans for serving our country and protecting our freedoms. Reminder that the Board of Selectmen's next regular meeting on November 18th will take place at the Millville Elementary School at 7:00 PM. Or following the adjournment of the, excuse me, or following the adjournment of the special town meeting, whichever time is later. And also, so, in, on the same evening, on November 18th, the special town meeting will begin at 6:30 PM. And copies of the warrants are available at the town hall, or maybe viewed on the town's website. The Centennial Committee Raffle winners will be drawn immediately at the special, after the special town meeting. The Finance Committee will hold its public hearing with respect to the financial articles on the warrant on Wednesday, November 13th at 6:30 PM. And last is the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing regarding the town's tax classification at 6:15 PM, just prior to the special town meeting. And that is, as a reminder, November 18th. This public hearing will take place in the auditorium at the Millville Elementary School. Next, we have approval of minutes and warrants. The first one will be for October 21st, 2013, at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 21st, 2013. I'll second that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the minutes for October 26th, 2013, at 9:00 AM. And that was at the Chestnut Hill Community Center.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for October 26th at 9 o'clock.
Second. And absent was, was Ms. Dean Wayne and Robert Baker. So, I would assume Jennifer would be staying, and so all in favor? Aye.
I do have warrants this evening.
Okay. And with, as far as that Saturday morning workshop that we did hold, I would like to thank all the residents that came. It was a great turnout. It was the first one that we, you know, we did, and we'd like to try and do more. We, we were able to discuss some pretty important stuff, and and the attendance was much better than, than normal attendances. But we understand that it's tough to come on a Monday night for lots of people, especially with children, so that was, that was why we did it on a Saturday. So I'm glad everyone took the time out on this Saturday morning to come chat with us instead of raking leaves. So. Go ahead, Helen, what do you have?
I have four, I have four warrants this evening. The first is actually the warrant for the payroll for the last payroll period ending October 19th. And if you recall, we had some significant issues with the payroll software. So by the time the payroll was done, we had to get it out, so it wasn't even time for the board to come in and sign. So that's why we're late. Generally, we would never release payroll without your signatures, but because it was payday, we really didn't have much choice legally but to pay the people what they deserved, so. Again, this is $31,773.53, and that's for the pay period ending October 19th. And then I've got the current payroll warrant. This is for the pay period ending November 2nd, 2013, in the amount of $36,037.57. I've got the payroll deduction warrant for $4,517.65. And lastly, I've got the vendor warrant dated November 4th, 2013, in the amount of $520,292.84. And that is much higher due to the Blackstone Millville Regional Assessment, which is on this, which is $481,000.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have reports of town officials, the library.
Good evening. Just a couple of things before we get started. I'd like to thank you. The last time I was here, I made some comments regarding some issues, and they were, I saw some actions, so I thank you. You did come and clean the street, and I did see something going on at the seniors' center, so thank you. I will be doing some highlights of the library. As you know, the library is still decertified as of this year, and hopefully we can get that resolved. One of the things that we're gonna need to do is get a little bit more money from the town from this year. Right now, we do have a great friends group that's doing a lot of support, but we still need to get a little bit more from the town, and then that could balance out. We are open four days a week, Mondays and Wednesdays from 6:00 to 8:00, and Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1:30 to 5:30. Kristin Webb is our librarian at the present time. Liz Achievers left in January. She went down and accepted a position at Blackstone Library. And we still have our two assistants, Mary Garvin and Sheila Robidoux. And Debbie Campbell runs our Storytime once a week. So we have those great people helping out. Kristin, who is, who is our present librarian, is going to be, is planning on continuing her education, hopefully starting in January to, so she can get a bachelor's degree. Because one of the things, if we are recertified, the librarian has to be, have a bachelor's degree, not just an associate's. So we hope that she goes back. We have a wonderful, excuse me, friends group under the leadership of Cindy Joliker. They have done great fundraising efforts and things for, for the library. And Jen has participated, I know, with her kids in some of the things, as well as presented.
Going to be.
Going to be, but you have in the past.
Yes, I have.
Yes. Yes, you have in the past. So we have things going on. Some of the examples, we had the Zoo, Southwick Zoo Walk, they sponsored that, and it was a big fundraiser for us. We've done the Toll Road. Some of the programs we put on are, we had the summer reading program for the kids. We did the Easter Hunt. We've done many other things that I can't think of right now. But we are looking for ideas for programs, not just for kids, but for adults. If anybody has any ideas here at the table or in the audience, bring it to our attention, maybe we can do something about it. Because we like to get people in the library, you know, at different levels, too. The other thing is, too, the friends, and I'll bring this up on their behalf, are having their annual drive, and they ask people in town to become a friend of the library. For an adult, it's $15, which is, I don't think is too bad, you know, to access the library. And that money goes to all kinds of activities, or purchasing books, or materials for the library. And if seniors, we gotta, they gotta rate five bucks, so, you know, so it's a, it's a good deal. Let's see. The other thing that the friends have, Cindy has set up through the middle school is a program where they're looking for people in town to interview. And they're looking for, like, history of the town and things like this, and this would be middle school students interviewing the person, and they want to put together a book. So if you're interested in being interviewed, call the library, leave your name with Kristin, and they'll set up a time and everything for you to get interviewed. So, you know, pass your history along, which would be excellent. Do we have, anybody think of anything else there, referring to my members? That's it? Okay, well, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, no, I, I don't. Thank you. Green Energy Committee?
Hello, Mr. Davis.
Good timing. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, or board, what can I do for you? You want to know what we've been doing?
Yeah, that's it.
We're, we're wondering what we've been doing. Since we were established, the Green Energy Committee has, how do I put this? Stumbled our way through the process of trying to get our, our town designated as a green community. And recently, we reorganized. We took a step back, because we seemed to be doing things twice.
Okay.
We were trying to find a lot of energy audits that were supposed to have been done, a lot of paperwork that was supposed to have been done that wasn't done before. And the ones that were done were no longer valid. So we got to look at this, and we said, "Look, let's just step back here. Let's reorganize, and let's put some plans into place." And that's what we've done. We've, we've actually moved quite a bit. We have just about all of our, there are five criterion that you have to complete and submit with your application to the state. We have all but one done. All of them are done.
Great.
The ones that normally are the biggest challenge, we did it in one night at town meeting. Other communities have fought for months and months and months to get that, those criteria satisfied. That's the adoption of the energy code, the right of setting, and other things like that. We've got all those done. The one that we are working on and having the biggest challenge is an energy reduction plan. And this is why that, I've recently made contact with Guardian Energy, and they're coming to our next meeting, which is on November the 19th. And he's, they are a company who does energy audits for towns. And they don't charge anything.
Okay.
Which is right up our alley.
Yes.
The, the way that it works, because if they, they do it for National Grid or the companies, free of charge.
Okay.
And then if we get the work done, they do the work, and it's all state, approved by the state.
Okay.
So that's why they don't charge. They're actually going out and since hustling up their own business.
But they do, they do get some of the grant money.
They do seek, get some of the grant money, yes, exactly, you know, that we get from the state. And we also have, want to try and get our representative at the state, Seth Pickering, to come to our next meeting, so that he can help guide us along. And we also want to look at, look to him to see if there's any state funds available to also help pay for some of these things. And that's where we stand right now. We also are looking, and you'll see it in our minutes, you can see them in our minutes, that I need to give to the town clerk. We're working on developing a water wheel here in the Blackstone River, at the bridge, that produces energy. And so we're out beating the fires now, and like the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, Imperial City, Kevin Meehan, a lot of other people, to see if they will join us. We want to bring Blackstone Valley Educational Technical School involved in this, for a good reason, because there's a lot of educational grants out there for this type of a project. And with that, we want to help have the students help design the water wheel, and then also help build it. And we want to be able to do that in light, all the lights, streetlights, come across that bridge.
Great, that'd be great.
And if anything above that, if we produce any energy above that, we sell it back to the company. Energy company.
So similar to the solar panel.
Pardon me?
Similar to the solar panel.
So, like I said, we've, we've just stepped back, reorganized, and redefined ourselves. We developed some spreadsheets so we can follow our task along, and make sure we don't get bogged down, make sure we don't forget anything. And really, to set some target dates that we know we have to meet ourselves, individuals as individuals, and say, "Well, I've got to do this, and my date is this date, I got to get it done." Because as you know, we're all very, very busy. We tend to procrastinate, and sometimes things don't get done. And so we've really been pushing each other in, in, in this forward. I think that Mr. Reposo can, can elaborate even more. He has been extremely valuable on our committee, as a lot of the work that's being entered in the computers and things like that for our energy, for electricity. Joe has done, Mr. Reposo's done. And the chief, and his, his personnel over at the, Trish over at the town hall, we need to give a big hand to, because she has really helped us out a lot. And it was a great addition. And it was the chief's idea. He presented to us at one of our meetings, and it's really worked out well. We couldn't have done it without her. That's basically where we stand. We, we're not going to get into this last month's deadline for applications. We did not want to submit an application that we didn't know contained everything that it needed, and that it was completely accurate, and we could back everything up with paperwork. So that's why we stepped back. We'll complete our paperwork, we'll complete our task, we'll submit it, and we'll be out there.
Personally, I feel that, you know, six months away isn't that far off.
No.
And we'll have the adequate baseline established, and an energy reduction plan.
Yeah. I think that we're going to find that we're, the Millville, we've included the Millville Elementary School in our plan. We got the Blackstone Regional School Committee to sign off, saying that we should use all the energy cost that goes to that building into our reduction plan. Which helps us a great deal, because that's probably 80% of our costs right there, energy costs. As we get the feasibility study and other studies done on this building and other buildings, we, we might find out that there's a lot more there than, than we thought there was. So our, like I said, our next step is getting this energy audit adopted.
Okay, great.
Anything else, right?
No, I don't. Sounds like you've been awfully busy.
We have been busy. We have been busy, as you people are, too.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have proposed signage from Sue Barnett of Town Amendment.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Sue Barnett, I'm with the Mendon Town Forest Committee. If you know where the Mendon Town Forest is, but it's right over the line of Chestnut Hill Road.
Okay.
So we are applying for a grant to actually make this a town forest with marked trails and such. There's a lot of historic areas in there, in the woods, you know, there's old stone walls, there's what used to be a shingle factory, a dance hall, lots of stone walls. It's a really interesting place.
Yeah.
So we were going to put signs up at the entrances, however, the one on Tower Road, nobody can see, because it's up on Tower Road. So we'd like to put it down on Chestnut Hill Road, where everybody can see it. I wonder what, what you want me to... Anyway, so I talked to, let's see, Joe Layden, and he said that the sign would be okay.
Okay.
And then I spoke with Brian Malali, and then him there at the end of Tower Road one day, to kind of discuss where would be an appropriate place to put the sign. So I have a picture I can pass around. So would it be like right underneath of the, the fire tower sign?
Okay.
Let's see, off, over on this side a little bit.
Okay.
I understand that a guardrail is going to be put up there soon, so we would, we probably won't be putting the sign up till a while after the guardrail's put up, because of course the grant doesn't even get submitted till February. And then it takes nine months for them to approve the grant, so it's going to be a while before a sign is put up.
Right, okay.
Did everybody get to see kind of where, do you know where this place is?
Yes.
Down the north side of, so it would be a two-sided sign, it would be actually closer to Millville on Tower, on Tower Road than Mendon. And it would just be a simple sign, it's probably going to end up being aluminum, just because it's cheaper, that's what we're going for. And it would have arrows, though, so.
Right, so they're not on Tower Road.
Tower Road.
Right, okay.
And it would be two-sided, so from both ways, they could tell where to go.
Right, okay.
So I don't really know how big it will be yet. The committee hasn't met since I've met with Brian.
Okay.
To discuss size, but it won't be obtrusive.
Right.
It won't be just big enough for people to read it.
Okay.
I believe we have, don't we have a bylaw in regards to the size of a sign?
I believe Joe would have discussed that with you.
Okay, so it will be within those, within your scope, okay. And I'll meet with him again, you know, after we actually have the money to put it up, and I've discussed with the other committee members.
Okay.
You looking for a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask you a question, please? Are those signs going into Mendon also, so they're all going to be matching?
Yeah, they'll be a ma, they'll be a sign.
Do you have any in Mendon?
There'll be one at the, you know, in the zoo parking lot, one of the entrances is there, so there'll be a sign there, there'll be a kiosk. The kiosk on Tower Road will be actually up on Tower Road, so it won't be with maps and such.
And then they're all matching.
They're all going to be all matching, and then these actually, these little ones are the trail markers, and we're actually going to make them ourselves, and they'll be out of word, but.
Okay, great.
I'll make a motion to, for the installation of a Mendon Town Forest sign on Tower Road.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Come visit after it's.
Well, we will. That's my, that's my backyard over there, so.
Pardon?
How long are your trails?
There's going to be trails all through it. One of the gentlemen that's kind of on the committee, but he's not, because he's a Millville resident, but he, he bikes back in there. So he's made a lot of mountain bike trails that are very long, because of course, they don't like short little rides, they want, so they're weaving, but there's a lot of walking paths that are, you know, a mile, two miles, it just depends on which way you want to go. I do have a map of, well, doesn't have all the trails on it, but that's the town forest. And you can see there's stone walls all through it, so it'll be, you know, trails. I haven't actually measured anything yet, so I'm sure.
There's a lot of deer in there, I know that.
I think so, that's what my sons are waiting for.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have first public forum. Correspondent. Everybody obviously must have read the proposal on the school floor.
Yeah.
If I recall correctly, didn't we say that we're going to try to find someone locally? Like, this one's from the company in New Jersey that finds someone local.
Yeah, I, you know.
Are they saying it has to be epoxy floors? Is this basically the avenue they're going?
Well, it can be, it can be repaired.
I know.
And it can be repaired for a lot less than $13,800, I'll guarantee it, and definitely less than $23,500, you know. I think.
I, I'd like the tables at this time.
Yeah, I think in bigger cities, in bigger cities, they can afford this, you know, this is Millville, not Dover.
There's a, there's a bigger issue here, in that when we went to the October 24th meeting, you know, we read the contract, or Helen mentioned the contract and the limit, that small repairs under $20,000, the school district would be responsible for, and it'd be capitalizing. The district is, is having none of that. You indicate they don't have the personnel to handle that, move the issues up there, like with the fence, stairs, and... So I, I think, I was going to propose this at, at the member forum, but in another time, we should take up this subject specifically, and address it.
Yeah, we should put it on, well, maybe not the 18th, but our meeting after that, which would be December, whatever that day is.
We'll have the table for now, but the, why I was upset is just, they only give you a 90-day warranty on this? We're spending this kind of money to give you 90 days, and that's it?
Yeah.
Is it cheap epoxy?
Yeah, I guess. It's New Jersey epoxy, we need some Massachusetts epoxy.
I, I like the tables at this time.
Is that June, December 1st, the next?
Uh, December 2nd.
2nd, we are next, want to put it for that? Table it for December 2nd, okay. That's it for correspondence I have. We have appointments and resignations. We have one resignation of two positions. So, it's unfortunate, but I, I regret sending this letter of resignation from the two positions I, I hold with the council on aging, one being an alternate member of the council, and the other being a volunteer at the center. The reason being, the increased work is, workload at the center is increasing. So I, I will step aside at this time, and let some other volunteers step, step in and take over. I will resign on November 4th, 2013, and at that time, I will return the key to Mrs. Helen Coffin. Thank you, Robert Bowen. Well, thank you, thank you is not enough to say to Mr. Bowen. I, I do know all the extras that he's been doing up there, working extremely hard at, at trying to keep the place clean and maintained, as well as being a council member. So with great regret, we, we will accept your, your resignation, but with the most thanks I can offer, that we could all offer, for all you did do, so thank you very much.
Motion, motion to accept resignation, Mr. Bowen. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And he brought you the keys already?
Not yet, I suspect he will do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Could you say, Mr. Bowen, a thank you for the board, please?
That's it for resignations, so we have Executive Secretary's report.
Um, one of the items I was going to go over with the board was just to give an overview of what transpired at the meeting with the school committee that Mr. Repose had mentioned, but if we're going to table that, I can wait until December to talk to you about that.
Okay.
I do have some serious concerns with respect to repairs and maintenance of that building, and I just need some guidance from the board as to how you'd like to proceed.
Mm-hmm.
The next issue is relative to the meeting that was held on Saturday at the Chestnut Hill Community Center, the discussion regarding the beaver dams. I did hear back from the Conservation Commission, the board had asked that I check with them to see if there was any movement, and I did hear from the secretary, Amy. They did do a site visit, it's clear that the beaver dams are on the power company's property. The fact is made even more clear because there is beaver mitigation equipment still on site from over two years ago. That seems to be, to be an admission that this is true. It appears that the Conservation Commission has no involvement unless the owner of the land containing the dams decides to install permanent flow devices. So, as far as Conservation Commission is concerned, they have no involvement because it, as I mentioned on Saturday, it is the responsibility of the owner of the property. So, with that being said, I know Mr. Barrett went out to the site with Representative Kuros and took some pictures, and you asked that I forward these to DEP, and I just wanted to make sure that that was the board's wish that I do that because I, I, as I mentioned Saturday, don't feel this really is the town's responsibility.
No, I was actually, that email was for, to see if Kevin, because he was going to speak with them for us. Speak to DEP for us, and he, and he's going to show them the pictures when he speaks to them. Because literally, I looked at, at three sixty-nine Chestnut Hill, the water is approximately ten feet, like she wasn't exaggerating, from her cesspool. So, it's not even a leach field, it's, it's an old cesspool, so that's, that's like not good environmentally. That's going to be a major disaster if that happens, so something's going to be done.
I do hope the resident.
And I looked at the, at the drainage that the electric company put in on their property, and the water is, I don't know how deep it is, I mean, what I can see is probably three or four feet deep at one side of the pipe. On the other end of the pipe, it's, it's barely trickling out, so the pipe is definitely clogged, it needs to be opened up. But that's their responsibility, but I don't know what we could do as the town to, it's, it's private property. If it was, if it was our property they were leasing, then we could put that in the lease agreement.
Right.
Right now, our hands are tied like that, so.
I do hope the resident takes my suggestion and does send a letter to, certified letter to the power company, clearly identifying her concerns and the issues with her property because it really is the power company's responsibility to come mitigate those issues.
Right.
That's what I was going to ask, has there been a conversation?
She indicated Saturday at the meeting that she has not communicated with them.
Oh, I think that's the first step.
That's her next step, hopefully.
First step, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's oak, there's oak trees, she, one of the pictures she's holding in her hand, so you can, you know, compare the size of the tree, I mean, it's, it's six inches around, and I couldn't have cut it better with an axe, it's like, it's unbelievable, they chew, they knock it right down right where they want, and then they strip the whole thing, all the branches, and then they start eating the tree, and then, then it's gone. And the den, their, their den, I guess that's what they call it, is a den, is almost the size of this room. It's unbelievable, I can't believe it's a, it's a stick house built in the water, and the entrance to it is underwater. They go, they dive under the water to get into the house. It's huge, it's unbelievable how smart of an animal they are, but at the same time, it's, it's destroying. I mean, I can remember as a, as a teenager going through there, there was a brook, there's a lake, I mean, her, both neighbors' properties are destroyed from it, and I mean, I know it's nature, but at the same time, you know, we've got to respect them, but, you know, we've got to respect ourselves too, so.
All right, well, hopefully she sends a letter out.
Well, she was in, she, she did what, she did a satellite picture of before and now. And you, it's, it's, it's a good picture, so hopefully that with the registered letter to, to them will, will get some actions, yeah.
Um, I just wanted to let the board know that I have received a public records request from a resident in town to view the litigation file with respect to the Polley property. So, I know this board was very clear that they did not want me to do anything further on the matter, but because it is a public records request, they will need to spend some time getting that, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Is that a written form, they filled out a form for that?
Um, it's not required to fill out a form, it doesn't even have to be in writing. The public, public records law per Mass General Law suggests that something be put in writing, but it's not a requirement, so we do need to.
Yeah, I know, the only thing we can't do without a written complaint is go on his property and investigate. But we can do anything right here, within, within this building to investigate.
Yeah, well, I just, I just wanted the board to know that my reasoning for getting this is because I received a public records request.
No, that's fine.
I'm not doing it for myself.
No, that's absolutely fine.
I just want to be accused of being witch or anything, so.
No, I just, I just didn't want, past practice on that property, I wanted to make sure that everything, all our eyes are dotted and teased across, so.
So, excuse me, for, in terms of public disclosure, I did attend the planning board meeting last Monday, basically to get the backstory on that property, and I just wanted to understand what the scope, the meaning of, you know, pre-existing condition and what that would allow for. Basically, I came up with a goose egg and with, with the advice to go and research the court records. In fact, one evening I did go into it, and I did, did find a record, but I, I stopped at the point where it asked for my credit card and fifty bucks. But I didn't know the, the company that.
They charge you.
Yep. So, I would support the effort, research, Mrs. Coffin's effort to research those records.
As a follow-up to an email that I copied the board on October twenty-first, this was with respect to certain individuals and town officials who have yet to take their oath of office. This has been a policy of the board for a few years now, but we're really starting to enforce it now that we've got a solid data entry program in place that is tracking all of the, the dates and oath of office with great thanks to Diane Lockwood, the Assistant Town Clerk. She's done an amazing job, and it's really something that we should have had a long time ago. But we've narrowed it down to four individuals now who have yet to take their oaths of office. We've sent out letters, emails, and we've made telephone calls. So, I feel as though from my office and my staff, we've really done all that we can do, so I now bring it to the board.
Okay.
If it is your decision to send one last and final letter with a specific date, letting them know that, you know, as of this date, the board will be voting, that, that, that position will be vacant.
Hey, you're right, can you do me a favor, please?
Sure.
Can you read the names and the position they hold, so it's on record in this meeting?
Sure.
Please?
Uh, this is David Germain, he's Emergency Management Department. Chris McNamara, Parks and Recreation. Gene Poolen, Centennial Celebration Committee and Memorial Day Parade Committee. And Keith Wing, Centennial Celebration Committee.
Um, I think an email was sent for Keith because there was some confusion on that.
Yeah, this is as of today from the town clerk, so.
Because I know he was going to, only because I, I, because I was getting the emails. And there had been some confusion, we were told he was all set, and then we were told he wasn't all set.
Yeah.
So, he does need to do, he does need to come in, but his intention was sent that he's going to do it, this coordinating of times for that.
So, I, I have been in discussions with town council, wanted to make sure that we were following any protocols necessary. And town council's advice is that, you know, the board can certainly vote to send one last letter indicating that it was final, providing a date, or it's not actually a requirement of the board to do that, you could vote this evening to make these positions vacant because they've yet to take it.
The letter you sent, Helen, was it just a letter or was it a registered letter that had to sign?
Um, none of them were registered letters, they were just, they were three letters that have gone out since July.
Four times seven dollars, thirty dollars.
What's the board, what do you want to do?
How about emails, do we have their emails?
We've done email and we've also called.
Oh, so you sent them the email you sent us then, in other words.
You sent them emails but no letters, right?
No, we've sent three letters, physical, United States Postal Service letters, three letters.
And emails?
Emails and telephone calls.
None of them were acknowledged.
All right, one more letter.
And that's it?
And then that's it, I mean, we've got till our, our next meeting, December se-
I think to save the town money, I think the last one you mentioned, you don't need to send a letter.
Yeah, no, he's already been in contact with them.
The, December, and then at the December second meeting, if they, I mean, that's four weeks away.
Could you, could you contact, like, the chair, like, I don't have a problem calling, like, Gene as part of the centennial and say, hey, I really need you to go down there and do this. I don't know the Pox and Rec, who their chair is, but to call Chris Mack or the Emergency Management to tell the, whoever's in charge, say, we have a member who's not, can you light the fire there?
Excuse me, Chief, are you involved in that energy management?
No, that's Mr. Furno.
I'm involved in Pox and Rec, and Chris McNamara, he's been trying to come down, he said he just hadn't had the time. He doesn't plan on coming down.
Do you think you could drop him a dime and say, please?
I'll call in tomorrow.
Thank you.
And as far as Emergency Management, we have informed.
David Germain, right?
Yes, we have informed the department head, Steve Furno, of that as well, he is aware of that.
Like, you told him today, Steve, you told Steve today?
I think it was Thursday.
Yeah, all right, all right, so that's close enough to today.
Okay, so we will do one more time, we'll put December second as the, the last and final date, and I'll put that on the agenda for them.
That's going to give them, what, three Wednesdays, so, three or four Wednesdays?
Probably not before Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and they were, they were told that if, if their understanding is that they already took their oath, then it's their responsibility to resolve the conflict with the town clerk's office, we get this from the town clerk.
It'll take less time to get, to take the oath than to prove that you already had it.
This could very well be the case.
It's not a problem with taking the oath twice, sometimes you pray twice, you know what I mean?
Um, and I just wanted to let the board know, for the past couple of weeks, we've had some heating issues in the town hall with the compressor specifically.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it's not, not recognizing temperature, it's not turning off, like, I'm not sure how the technical part of it works, but it's tripping the fuse or the breaker, and it's running constantly, so the heat does not turn off. So, when we left here on Thursday, it runs constantly.
That's why it was so hot this morning in here?
Uh, were you here? Well, fortunately, we found, last week, luckily enough, we came in on Friday.
Yeah.
One of the, the young custodian was working, and called, and he said, it's awfully hot in here, so I came in. We got the heating technician on the phone, and he was able to talk our BVT student through it in the boiler room, how to fix the problem. Seemed to, seemed to be working fine, unfortunately, when we came in Monday morning, it, the same thing had happened. So, the technician came, he replaced a wire, he thought short was a bad wire. And then it ran fine all week, Monday through Friday, and then unfortunately, this morning again, Monday morning. At some point over the weekend, it tripped again. And Marilyn Matthew, the town accountant, said she was in Saturday morning, and it was very hot in here, so I think it probably was sometime Friday.
Yeah.
So, this, it brings serious concerns because this is running Friday, Saturday, all day Sunday, heat non-stop. Not only are we wasting considerable amounts of oil, but our server today was so hot, I'm surprised it didn't blow. The fan was making a racket.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, it could cause significant damage by having the heat going like that.
We might look at that system, John could verify that, it's a pneumatic system?
It's a pneumatic, yeah, these are pneumatic, I deal with this every day, they, it's all technology, it's, you're dealing with low voltage wires, and you're dealing with air. And basically, a lot of these things, you've got to rebalance that, it only takes one thermostat to have a runaway freight train. It's, it's the nature of the beast, but I think it's not up here, it's down there, they have a problem with their controller. And like what Helen's saying, they keep on going down there, so with the air compressor, with the controller, it's not the air compressor, it's maintaining the air, it's the controller telling the boiler not to run and go on, so. Who knows, I mean, it's, it's a bag of worms, it's old, so.
But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so if you happen to ever be in here over the weekend, and it's, if you ever notice something significantly disturbing, feel free to call me.
Do you turn the servers down on the weekend?
The server?
Yeah.
No, we can't.
Nope.
I'm just going to ask, can you, you can't, right?
Yeah.
No, it, it actually updates over the weekends.
Okay.
I just want to ask if you could do that.
Yeah, I think what I am going to do between this heating issue and we had some, and we've had them in the past, the room that the server is in also serves as an individual's office who is very chilly if the air conditioner is on in the summertime. And I have stated over and over again, we need to leave the air conditioning on because the server will get too hot over the weekend if the sun is beating on it in the middle of August. And this employee is just too cold, she wants to run a heater when the air conditioner is on, so I think it's gotten to the point where I'm going to have to invest the money into a cabinet that has a controlled environment that we can put the server in because there's no place else that we can put it where it will be in a controlled environment for temperature. So, I am going to start looking into those, those cabinets.
You can check with them, check with the tech person, I know our server at my work is in a room that's very hot. It's an old section of the school, it's, it's the old Catholic part, and they just, they have it in a cabinet, but they have a, like, a fan running.
Right.
And it's not that expensive, it really isn't, but, you know, rather than some of the high-end things, you might be able to get away with them.
That's what I was going to say, put another fan, like you said, you have to, in a box, but put another fan there, and I think it would be fine for, for a cheap fix, and it would be fine. And it can blow the hot air out of it at that lady that's always working. Then you kill two birds with one stone, right?
Oh, goodness, and just the last thing, the Board of Health Office is finally complete, it's been painted, it's been floored, the furniture was moved back in on Friday, the secretary moved her supplies and organized her desk and everything today, so that's all set.
Good.
Yeah, so we'll be moving back down to the basement soon, get back to work on that, so that's all I have for the scene.
All right. Okay, next we have the MES water, so Northeast Water, I'm sure everybody read the mile-long packet on this.
I studied it.
Yeah, a lot of it, I had no idea what I was reading, but, so, no idea what half that stuff means. But, but as far as the, his proposal to get the water drinkable again and.
I'd like to ask one thing before we get into this. Helen, do you know how much water we've spent on bottled water in that school since we've had this whole thing? You have any idea?
I do not, the school pays those bills, with the exception of the, when we had the issues with the well.
Right.
The bottled water, because of the well, it was covered by insurance. With that exception, the school department has picked up the tab on the bottled water, I do not have a number on that.
I can imagine it's ridiculous.
Is, is there any exception? Is, is there any exception or DEP requirement that can't continue on with bottled water and if an item?
Nothing I'm aware of.
I thought at the DEP, they said that we were clear for- that the, the results had come back, but as a precautionary measure, they were keeping it in place.
I think it was until we find out what the deal is with the TOCs.
They can't drink the water, absolutely not.
But I put at one of our meetings, maybe the TOCs came up.
We, we had been clear at one point, yeah, we were, we were off bottled water for a year.
They were off, we're back on.
We've been back and forth, so.
Did the, uh, MPA test go?
Um, I haven't heard, it was hopefully this week, because we did have some rain, but I did not receive anything today that it had started today, so. I'm sure they will let me know.
So, the first proposal was, uh, he's being- So Mr. Ferrari's gonna fix the, the issue, put, put some of the piping back the way it was, to, to say it all in simple terms.
He's gonna, uh, test the sand filter?
Yep.
Find out how much of it's contaminated, straighten that out, get a baseline, he's also gonna implement a, um,
Maintenance-
A maintenance step procedure, which they didn't have, um, which is, they should have, with a checklist. And, um, the great thing about this whole thing, that if they do run into problems, his company has the resources and the people to back them up with no extra cost to what, so if they run into a problem there with their count going up, and a phone call needs to be made, their operator will call Bob and their men, and they'll all go down, it won't cost us, because it's, it's part of the check and balance, which is, which is a good thing. Um, he also guarantees that he can put the system back on track and make acceptable to everybody and pass all the requirements that, uh, DEP and everybody else requires from that.
Mr. Ferrari's proposal, uh, basically outlined three different tasks. The, uh, Mr. Ferrari's looking for approval of the, uh, Floyd Selectman, uh, to, uh, enter into an agreement for a term of the year.
Would you, I, I, I agree with that, Joe.
And then, uh, we, we would arrange for him to come in, it's something, he entirely requested to sit down with the board. And then, uh, small water systems, uh, continue with that MPA test, we need to get the results on that. And then he identified three specific tasks, uh, for the scope of the work that he's gonna do. The first thing is an engineering evaluation report, uh, with corrective action. And he'll make a submittal to, uh, the, uh, Massachusetts Department of Environment, uh, Technology. And then he'll go ahead and schedule a meeting with, uh, DEP with, uh, including, uh, individuals from the town. And, uh, at that time concurrent, uh, on, on, basically on the consensus, uh, of agreement, develop an implementation plan, and then affect the implement, the implement, implementation plan. Task two, uh, is to refurbish the system, as John indicated, is to, uh, remove the contact tank and the associated piping, uh, to flush the system out completely. Test and replace the, the green sand. And then, here's, here's where a decision point to come about, but he's preferring, uh, on the, uh, pre-oxidation chemistry. Uh, he's, uh, now, uh, suggesting that he move, uh, away from the chlorine and, um, use the Pr-Mag.
That one.
That one. And that'd be more preferable to DEP, and then he would do, uh, green sand operational validation. And then, uh, volatile organic, uh, compound, uh, validation. And task three would be, uh, to get the system to, uh, per the requirement of MADP, achieve section six compliance, and it, when he met with us last time, he said that, that's only a minor change. So that would be the way he would attack it, and he's, uh, he's, he's come up with a comprehensive, uh, schedule for testing, it's significantly more complete than what was, what was happening, uh, before. It identifies the roles of what, uh, the, uh, the personnel in the school would have to do, and, and basically, he said his people would be on site two times every week.
Right, and what he also said, that if there was something that was going out of compliance, he has the manpower to fix the problem with no extra charge, because that's their resources, they have their own resources at house.
So the, the grand total on that, for, uh, the engineering services and the operation, is forty-four thousand and change, with, uh, a plus to that, that, that's dependent on what MADP, uh, DEP will assess in terms of, uh, mandate in terms of testing and the cost of that. So the water operations, I think the town right now is budgeted for, like, twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, and he, he quoted with the, uh, operations portion of it, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Which is not bad. The only thing that we got, and I understand what you're saying, Joe, but he has to, uh, get a baseline again.
That's right.
That's why the extra cost, he's gotta get back to that baseline again, he's gotta make the change and put it back. But he also said, at our last meeting, he guarantees it. Okay, he guarantees to put it back the way it was, but if he's gonna do it, his only problem was that he needs to deal with this thing for a year, not just fix it and walk away, he needs to stay, I agree with him a hundred percent. If you're gonna fix it, then you gotta maintain it to make sure that we have a, a steady number, and not that it varies, and you also need to put in, um, some maintenance and protocol and checklist and this and that, which is not there, which he said he would do.
Yeah, it's all, he, he included all of that in his proposal.
So in order to move forward and get this straightened out, we gotta get a baseline, and we're gonna have to get him in here if we're gonna straighten this out to fix it, because small waters does, you know, has, does not have that capability of doing that. I hate to say, but that's a fact.
I would agree with that, uh, that, uh, you know, Bob Ferrari's the guy that's gonna fix it. He's most knowledgeable with that, that process. You know, changing the, uh, chemistry a little bit, you know, might be a little bit of an, an issue, uh, but, uh, the, the other thing is, if, you know, what do we do with, uh, small waters?
We give them their notice. You have to give them their notice and tell them-
I looked at the contract, it is like a ninety-day-
Right, so we'll just have to give them her ninety days, maybe she'll say, okay, December, I'll walk away and give the town a break, maybe. Uh, that would be, uh, something, maybe Helen could talk to her.
As I understand it, in the past, she's been amenable?
Yeah, I don't think I have any problem. I, I think they, they need to work together to do the, it needs to be a transitional change.
Do the transitional plan, yes.
But, yet, yet I thought I had, in order to satisfy, uh, DEP, the personnel at DEP, is that, you know, the basic, in my estimation, the basic breakdown in the whole system is we lack the oversight on the whole process. And to make, now, uh, if we terminate small water systems, which is comfortable with, uh, DEP's comfortable with, uh, I think we have to do a, a, a strong showing to DEP that the town has taken oversight on this process. That someone from the town is actually involved.
Well, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, I think much they see the, the avenue that we're going, Joe, um, and they know Bob, they know his work, and, um-
And they wanna know us, too, that, that's, that's the thing, they, they know small waters.
I understand that, I understand that, but there was mistakes made, okay, and there's certain things that we have now implemented.
But we as a town could've watched the shot.
I understand that, I understand that.
Yep.
That's why there were certain things that yourself and I and the rest of the board made, put in this thing to change things, so we safeguard the best interest of the town and the children.
We don't wanna see a recurrence of this kind of situation again.
That's one of my biggest concerns, we don't want this coming back at us again.
I think one of the important things, too, is by entering into a contract, um, Mr. Ferrari, I'm trying to say this diplomatic, but in the meeting with DEP, it was not, there was not a great flow of respect or communication. And I don't want the town of Millville to have a poor relations with DEP, because, John, you weren't there.
Doesn't matter, Jennifer.
I'm telling you, John, I'm telling you what I saw, ask Joe, ask Helen.
I don't think the DEP has any remorse against, uh-
I'm not saying they do, but I wanna make sure, and I think this is what Joe's getting at, that the town is involved and that we're aware, so that we maintain our relationship with DEP, because they can in turn make our life miserable and costly.
Right, but the company that has good relationship with DEP failed us.
And I understand that, but we need to make sure our relations with DEP-
Well, that's why.
And I think that, I think that has to be a conversation we have with Mr. Ferrari, as to how he represents us at DEP.
No, I understand that.
Because the manner in which he has, has not impressed me, and I don't think it impressed DEP.
And in his, in his defense-
He's knowledgeable, and he knows what he's doing, I get that, but it's also about being able to communicate with them and work with them.
Right, but in his defense, he's aggravated about the whole thing, 'cause he built the whole thing, got it, got us to drink the water again, then-
I get that.
He was snuffed out of the whole operations, and what happened? It went sour, and then had he been notified when it was first an issue, it could've been fixed before DEP would've even had it been notified, and we wouldn't be sitting here right now.
I've heard it all, I'm just saying my two cents, Joe and Helen, if they wanna disagree with me, they can't, but I'm just letting you know. My feelings are-
That's why we made sure, all of us, that there were certain things put in here, and we have a good understanding with Mr. Ferrari, that he needs to make sure, like you said, Jennifer, when he goes in front of the DEP, there's an understanding between them and him and his board, that there's certain things that need to be, and there's no turning, I mean, it's either gonna be this way or no way.
And I think that's what Joe's saying, is that the Millville piece is involved there, so that we can ensure that, that we're represented and that DEP relationship stays strong.
I agree.
I've had a very frank conversation with Bob, I, I, I get along very well with Bob, and I've told him that I felt he's been very arrogant in conversations, um, and he, he fully admits it. And as to John's point, he's just frustrated about this entire situation. He informed me that he does actually have a very good relationship with DEP, he works with DEP on other projects in Massachusetts. There is no animosity between his company and DEP.
Well, they can't be, 'cause he wouldn't be in business for very long.
And he, he was gonna work on his arrogance, he fully admitted that's his personality, um, you know, he, he knows it, he's aware of it, so.
Like, like I said, Helen, and I think I know where some of, some of it comes from, it's just, is, he's so frustrated with the way where everything turned out, like Roland said, and the thing was, is he built the system, and I understand what he's saying, 'cause I built systems, and they kept me out of loop, and the thing failed, and they said, why? And it was a quick fix or an adjustment or something that wasn't right, that they didn't, they didn't oversee, and the thing just went crazy. And I think that's what Bob's frustration, like Roland said, it could've been an easy fix, who knows? That's, that's then, and this is now, but we need to fix it now, and I understand that we have to make sure as the representative of Millville, we gotta make sure that DEP knows that we stand strong and, and we will not tolerate, we have certain guidelines, which we expect from Northeast Water, and that we do respect DEP and their, and what they say. And I understand what Joe and you were saying, and I agree a hundred percent.
I mean, I, I'd rather than keep beating a dead horse, I'd like to move forward with this, I mean, we, Bob Ferrari's past, uh, performances in the town is, is his resume with us, so we know what he can and can't do.
Well, with that said then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion and bring, uh, Bob Ferrari's company, Northeast Water, in to start, um, procedures of, uh, straightening out, um, the water at Millville Elementary School. And also give small waters their notice that we'd like to make a transition.
Of having them-
I'll second that, but I also like to add a date when Mr. Ferrari next comes in.
Right.
Schedule a date for him.
We, we need to, yeah, that was my, I wanted to make a date to have it come from the board.
Well, we're gonna, we can't throw a date in the motion, but we'll make, 'cause we don't know when he's really available, so, but-
Well, he did indicate in his letters that his availability-
He did. So I'll let, we'll let Helen decide on a date, get back to us?
So earliest it'll be the December second, 'cause we wouldn't have time on the eighteenth.
So I make a motion?
Second.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Helen, has this contract been, can we have it reviewed by legal to make sure? So that if there's anything in there, we can bring it up to him at that point?
Sure. Um, the only other thing is that, in my review of it, that I wanted to point out, um, on the, um, the annual maintenance contract, the first proposal, um, in the compensation, the consumable chemicals and materials he has as needed, and the administrative, I'm sorry, the analytical expense budget is to be determined, those two cost items are already included in what we budget. So this would be additional, however, this entire list of, um, maintenance that he's going to, uh, address now is not being identified currently as we're budgeted. So in the end, what he's giving us, I guess what I'm trying to say, is a much better deal than what we have now. So, he's gonna be dealing-
Well, I think what he's trying to do though with that, Helen, going forward, is he needs to try to find himself a baseline to start with.
Right.
And that's where that all comes into play. Uh, once he finds out where his baseline is, some of these chemicals he might not need to use, some of these things he might have to cut in half, some of it might just, we'll get, uh, whatever, or money back or whatever, I mean, he, he, he needs to go in there and evaluate the situation, find out where he stands. It's just like the sand filter. He said to all of us, he says, I can go in there and take a sample, but only half of it, or maybe a quarter of it's only contaminated, I don't need to replace all of it, so the cost of that is very minimal. And right now, he can't say that, because, um, I don't think you heard of any tests coming back on that, right? No, no tests, see, so, there, there's some stages he needs to do before he can move forward.
But I, I think it's important for the board and anybody at home who's watching this to understand that not only is he dealing with the filter system, but he's gonna be doing the PM on the fire suppression tank, the water tank, and all that needs to be done, along with dealing with the waters, you know, the filter system.
We're getting a lot more bang for our buck.
It's a good deal.
And these are all items that we really should have been dealing with all along, that we assumed were being handled, that were not being taken care of, so. Um, and again, it, it, some of it falls back to discussion with the, the school committee, that they don't feel responsible, so unfortunately, the town is gonna have to step up to the plate and take care of it.
And some of it, he's gonna do is, is stuff we should've been doing for twenty years that we didn't know how- And some of it, he's gonna do is stuff we should've been doing for twenty years that we didn't know had to be done.
That's right, you're right. Yep.
It's important, I think, that it's part of the conversation, to keep the school board apprised of what's going on, particularly Dr. Davis.
So I will be sure to email Dr. Davis directly.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good luck. Okay. New business, cultural council grant, FY14 grant.
Looking for a motion?
Need a motion to authorize the chairman of the board to sign the state standard contract on behalf of the board for the cultural council's FY14 grant of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Stop.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the snow emergency parking ban. We all hear this every year, so... Effective November fifteenth through April of two thousand thirteen through April first, two thousand fourteen, vehicles cannot be parked on town roads during sanding or plowing operations. Doing so may cause vehicles to be towed at the owner's expense at the discretion of the police department. So keep, then, I have a repeat, no. Please keep all vehicles off town roads during snow events. If a parked vehicle obstructs snow plow operations, so it's the same, same letter twice a year.
Right, so what, the second one is what will appear on the table?
Yeah.
And the top one will be posted from the doors. And I would just need a motion from the board authorizing those.
Motion to approve the snow emergency parking ban, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have all received our schedule for the two thousand fourteenth regular meetings. Everybody's good with that?
And I would just need a motion.
You can add more if you'd like. Wanna add more? Just kidding, that was a joke.
Motion to approve this calendar, second.
Second, all in favor? Alright. We have animal control vehicles. It has been deemed unsafe for driving on the road, so...
I mean, it does have a sticker, and the staff is driving it, but we have been advised that probably it's not in the best interest of the town right now, so we should replace it as soon as possible.
Alright, so we have...
So the town would need to put out an official request for proposals for a used vehicle.
So we have a proposal, a proposal request with certain standards that we'd like, but not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
And obviously, any of these criteria, the board can certainly change. If you would like to decrease that, whatever you would like to...
Twelve grand.
If you would like to lower that, you're certainly welcome to.
What are you gonna get?
Huh?
You're looking, you're not looking at just the car.
I'm pretty sure you get an SUV or something.
SUV or minivan table.
Or less than twelve grand.
Something like an Explorer would be big enough. Not gonna be transporting, if he needs to transport a horse or a cow, I'll do it for him, you know?
No, I mean...
I'm not gonna buy a big vehicle big enough.
Have you priced out Blazers or minivans?
I have, I've done research.
I mean, I have.
The minivan is gonna be likely the best option for the town. It's the lowest price for a used vehicle as compared to the SUVs. Additionally, we do have to stay within the limits for the green energy.
Right.
And it's tough with the SUVs to do that, so the minivan would be the best deal for the town. If you wanted to, you know, possibly go older with the vehicle here, you could do that. You could, you know, accept something with higher mileage if you wanted to lower the price, but the price of twelve thousand is, kind of fits in with the other criteria that I've got listed, so...
I don't wanna go too old because I'm gonna have a rust issue like we have.
Right.
So...
You go up?
I mean, pay now or pay later. I think twelve thousand's pretty cheap for a good vehicle today.
Hey, why don't you go up to, what you gonna call him, ask him if he can help us out? Call it, deal one.
Oh, you'll probably get a...
They have a...
Well, we'll send him a request, absolutely. We'll send him one of the requests for proposals, and we'll see what he gets back to us with.
He's a good job.
Yep.
Good RFP.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, so motion to approve the RFP for the animal control vehicle.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So now we have a request for a toll day. The board received a request from PAC 21 Millville Cub Scouts seeking approval to hold a toll day on Saturday, November sixteenth, with a rain date of Saturday, November twenty-third. They've already spoke to Chief Landry, and all that, all those details have been taken care of. So we're looking for a motion to approve the toll day request for the PAC 21 Millville Cub Scouts for Saturday, November sixteenth, with a rain date of Saturday, November twenty-third, providing that the town's toll day safety regulations are followed and the town is in receipt of a signed general release and indemnification form.
So moved as read, second.
Can I ask a question, Helen?
Yes.
I haven't been forever since I seen the toll days. Is it like over eighteen only in the road?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Yep. Yep, yeah, the younger kids just kinda hang on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure. I figured as much.
So, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Members' forum.
I said my piece already.
Oh, yeah, right. Anyone else?
Something came up when the mendon burst...
Yes.
Was here.
Yep.
That sign at the end, we may have to put a call into, because those signs are put up by Mass Highway, and I'm sure we can report that to them, but that sign is very faded, very faded at the end of Tower Road.
Oh, the, yeah, the Tower Road sign.
What's the name of it? Is it Malali?
Yeah.
There is a state sign.
Yep.
Similar to like once we have a...
Memorial Fire Tower.
Fire Tower, yeah.
Oh, Machinero?
Oh, Machinero.
The Machinero, yes.
It was one of those names.
Yeah.
The Machinero, oops, your own.
I got the N.
I drive by it every day. See, that's how faded it is.
It is, it's very, very faded, and if they're gonna be putting up a guardrail, and they're gonna be putting up this wall or something, might as well get it all looking spiffy up there.
Check with the highway surveyor on that one.
Today's a four, right?
Yep.
Okay, final public forum. Okay, so our next meeting is Monday, November eighteenth at seven PM, or immediately following the special town meeting. And also, there is, we do have a hearing at six fifteen in the article in that same evening. So hope to see many, many people there. Thank you very much, and have a great week. Now, we're gonna be entering executive session, and then only to come back to this meeting to adjourn.
Correct.
And the executive session, excuse me, is Mass General Law, Section 30A, Subsection 21A3.